Good morning. Welcome to the Clickat County Commissioners' Regular Meeting for October 1st, 2024. And we'll start, please note, all three Commissioners are here. We have Mr. Christopher and myself in session, and Mr. Anderson online. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The word of the United States of America, into the great world which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just.
Thank you. So you're in the room. Would you like to do the motions?
Any changes to the business agenda?
Not for me.
None here.
I need my pen. I move that we approve the business agenda.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Business agenda passes.
I move that we approve the Commissioner meeting minutes for September 17th, 2024.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Consent agenda with seven items.
Hmm. You're doing consent agenda before public comment, huh?
Yeah. I asked, I asked staff to move everything forward due to the fact that I've got this by-state delegation I've got to present in front of.
I'm thinking of legalities of such. Do we still post on the agenda that written comment at the bottom of when we post that written comment can be given to blah, 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 blah? Okay, got it. All right, that's fine. As long as we do that, we can do the consent agenda before public comment. I move that we pass consent agenda with seven items.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I hate doing consent agenda before public comment, in case somebody actually wants to comment on the agenda, but since nobody seems to ever want to do that. I move that we pay the payroll, accounts payable warrants in the amount of $310,471.87, and the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $1,103,388.82 for the day dating September 30th, 2024.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So we are going to move this morning to Department update from Planning Director Scott Edelman.
We also doing the, uh, the, yes.
All your reasons here for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Lori Anderson. Good morning.
Good morning.
So you have the, you have the findings of facts in your packets. We tried to encompass what was approved by the board last week, which included the findings recommended from the Planning Commission, as well as some additional findings that were, were added to it. So this is us requesting you to approve those findings and make sure that we got them right. And then if we do, we've got an ordinance that will be reviewed by the PA's office for next week, which includes reference to those findings. So then ordinance and a map, which will come to you next week, as long as the findings are right. And if findings are not right, we'll fix the findings and bring all of it to you next week.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion? Questions?
I don't have any discussion.
So we have two things, two items before us. One is the action and the other is the determination of non-significance. Do we need to take the, adopt the findings of the determination of non-significance first before the actual action?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. That would be the best procedure.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, if you're ready?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would move to adopt the findings, conclusion and decisions on SEPA 2023-2021, the 2023-02 Milson-Ronroe, my findings of fact.
And I'm going to step down in second. Discussion? Mr. Christopher, anything? No? So hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Oh, any opposition?
No. Nay.
Nay. What that one was.
It would be no to the, any opposition? No, this one.
Make it clear. That's great. Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, here we have before us Monroe Wilson's own change, Zone 2023-02. My motion is to approve the findings, conclusion and decision and the resolution for that.
So I will step down in second. Discussion?
My discussion was at the time of the incident, so.
So motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
I would just like to thank our staff in the public, along with this long-drawn-out process. And I really want to thank Lori and Scott for all the work they've done shepherding this through the entire process.
I really appreciate that, Commissioner Anderson, especially for Lori. She has endured through this whole process and done an outstanding job of responding to every public comment. Some not very nice, but always polite, friendly, and we've, and she has posted more things online for this than any other application of this sort, I think, that the county's ever had. So we've, she's done a great job of providing public information according with the public. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you both very much. Thank you. Okay, so we will move to public comment. So those in the room, if you'd raise your hand and come forward, we'll recognize you. Online, unmute yourself or raise your hand and we'll call on you. So we will start because of what the room looks like this morning. We'll start online. Is there anybody who'd like to give good morning? Roger Nichols.
Good morning. I don't like to do this very often, but I'd like to pass a compliment to all three of you for a really well-done town hall meeting, and I hope to see more of them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. So in the room? I know you will. So online. Is there anybody else that would like to comment this morning? Beautiful.
Sounds like your last.
7211.
Greg Wagner, C.
Good morning.
Why did, why did Public Works accept the vague franchise agreement drawing submitted by Cypress Creek Renewable for the power line along Knight Road? Drawings lack many details. Cypress Creek Renewables stated the franchise area will be approximately one mile. What does approximately mean? The area could be 1.99 miles. This needs to be corrected. Public Works should send the franchise application and drawing back to Cypress Creek Renewable for correction. A citizen cannot submit a house drawing and state approximately 2,000 square feet. So why is Cypress Creek allowed to be vague? I have been told that Cypress Creek will be, Renewables will be meeting with county officials in the next few weeks to discuss their franchise agreement. That would be a good time to tell them their drawings are inadequate. Will the Commissioners hold this meeting with Cypress Creek Renewable in the chambers, allowing citizens to attend? And hear what Cypress Creek Renewable has to discuss? This project will negatively impact many citizens, and we, the citizens, have a right to hear what Cypress Creek has to say. James Dean Construction has used the county quarry property on Highway 141 for over 25 years for his personal financial profit without any financial compensation to the county for use of the county quarry property. Why has this been allowed? The county should be paid a fee for every ton of gravel leaving the county quarry from James Dean's quarry operation. Republic Corporation pays the county a tipping fee for every truckload of trash dumped at the landfill. Why has the source of revenue gone untapped at Mr. Dean's quarry? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. In the room. Not yet. So online. Good morning, Kaylee.
Good morning. First, I wanted to agree with Roger, and the town hall was really great. It was nice to hear so many different questions and your guys' responses, and that everybody just kept it down to business. So I appreciate you guys coming together and doing that. I have been thinking more about my wolf discussion, and I think that what I, sorry, my dog is being a turd. What I guess I was trying to get at was that maybe our WASAC, WASAC representative can talk to other counties, and even if we could just get the boundary line moved to the Cascades, you know, and I think that meeting with local ranchers just to see what the impact is would be nice since, you know, at least it makes our voices heard, even if we can't do anything. Third is the short-term rental discussion, that never-ending. I recently took a job as a property manager, and the owner has a bunch of short-term rentals, not only in Clickat County, but on the East Coast. And in the East Coast, or on the East Coast, there is a yearly license that you have to pay for, and BNO taxes every quarter. And, you know, it's maybe $100 a quarter for the BNO taxes, and then the license is over $100. So I'm thinking that if you guys are going to look into doing something of that nature of, you know, honing in on the short-term rentals, that that might be an okay revenue source as well. So I don't know if that's how it happens now, but I'm just curious on, I guess, how Clickat County is doing it, if we're doing anything, and giving my two cents on how much a consumer is paying for, or a property owner is paying for that sort of stuff. So, thank you so much, and we will see you next week.
Thank you. Bye. Back online. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Good morning, Gabrielle Gilbert.
Hi. So today on your schedule, you have the economic development is creating a, you're co-working with the State of Washington, their Department for Economic Development, and you're getting a small business advisor. I, I, I hope that in not, you're discussing childcare, because for this, you want to develop more jobs and opportunities in small business, and you have to go hand-in-hand with figuring out what you're going to do about your childcare desert. So I think it's great that they're creating this, but I, I think you have to have conversations about how you're addressing the childcare desert in, in tangent with this economic development and this, and the Washington State University, and the business advisors that's coming in. So those are my, my, just, I hope those conversations are being had, because I don't think you can take the lack of childcare in the county out of the equation when you want to develop more business. So the town hall was great. White Salmon wants to see you down there in White Salmon, in the Pioneer Center, to have a town hall as well. And we've been asking that for a while, and I think it's, it would be nice for the Commissioners to, you know, I don't know, on your yearly schedule, pop around in town halls into your constituency. So I feel like it's a large county, and the individuals need to see you. So calm on down. So those are my two thoughts, and thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you, Gabby. So back online. Raise your hand or unmute yourself so we can see you. Anyone else with comment this morning? See, Mr. Smith. Oh, she saved you. Sherry, good morning. She's gone again, did she?
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to continue to talk about the short-term rentals and that conversation in the county. And of course, you know, I've been verbal about the fact that Commissioner Anderson, in fact, I've made a complaint with another person to co-compliance, that, and this was found out through Commissioners Anderson's short-term rental property, having a party for under, an alcohol party for underage children. And that's through the sheriffs. It was all public information. And so having a short-term rental, as Mochi, the former planning director, had told Commissioner Anderson three times, he needs a conditional use permit. But he doesn't go through that process, because this is a county of special favors, apparently. And yes, the county can make money. They could make money off this as other places do. And, and then that tracks who's having short-term rentals, and it keeps revenue coming into our county. Maybe we could, some daycare for that. So I would like the process to at least be followed by Commissioner Anderson to get a conditional use permit. But anyway, back to the special favors. I find more and more, I see them all over the place through government. And oh, interesting statistic I saw was government is the largest employer of the State of Washington with over 550,000 employees. So when people depend on their jobs to shelter themselves and feed themselves, and when your employer tells you to do something, you're probably going to do it, whether it's morally right or morally wrong. Because I was thinking about these large solar and wind that's being pushed so much, and the lands that these foreign corporations are, you know, wanting to put their, this is all over the country. The stories are out there. People are fighting against it, because they want to put these, these solar panels on great farmland, because it's flat, it's already ready to go. And so, you know, why, when all the people are crying out, no, 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 does the governments across the nation continue to push for it? And I can only think of maybe bribery, money, profit in your pocket? Because every other person who sees the negative impacts of this says no. And then the people cry out to our government, no. And how come our government isn't protecting their fellow man, their neighbor? John Smith, who's going to have this wreck his property for generations to come? So, you know, that's all I have to say. Maybe we start looking like we're a real government, not just a business doing special favors. Thanks.
In the room yet?
Oh, we're not online.
Okay, online. We'll give it a chance. Anyone else that would like to give comment this morning, please raise your hand or unmute. 2662.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Tracy from Lisle.
Good morning.
And I noticed, good morning. I noticed on your agenda today, you have where the emergency management is wanting to do, wanting to get permission to work with the military again, to get the CAD computer added dispatch, the mapping, interface updates for call geolocations, verification zoning, which I had a question on, what, what is that? And agency dispatching, which I'm also questioning that. Is that for other agencies? And maybe Mr. Anderson or one of you can answer this question, but who dispatches for fires anymore? Is it through DEFKING and the dispatch center, or do they have a separate dispatch for wildland fires? That's just a question I'd like answered. But I'm, I'm, I'm wondering why we're always doing this geolocating and updating, and, you know, why we don't have it in-house? We have to always go out to the military to do it, or other places, you know, that we have problems. You know, I brought up addresses forever in, in this county. Recently, the Lisle Fire Department got a half a million dollars, actually, it's $556,000 grant to buy a water truck or a tender. And, and we, they, they had just asked for donations last year by the community, and received $60,000 donations to purchase a tender June of 2023. And I'm wondering why they need a second tender for a half a million dollars? So the address that they used to get this tender was Fifth and Washington. We all know that Fifth and Washington doesn't, is not a legal address. It doesn't go to a, a tax lot. And that's how they get their grants, is by using fake addresses. So I'm asking the county Commissioners today to look into this. You know, I brought it up for, for years. Look into this and see why this, this, this entity is using fake addresses for their grants and, and such. And I think that you have, you have a duty to look into it, because nobody else will. If this county didn't use fake addresses or have fake addresses on their, their location points, you know, they have location points on every single address, I mean, Fifth and Washington, Fourth and Washington, Third and Washington. You name it, and the map will take you there. So I'd like you to look into this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. Anyone else online this morning? No, not seeing anyone. One last ask. And Mr. Smith, you get to be last in the room. Good morning.
Let's call the staff too. Andrew Smith, Clickat County, town meeting. Hopefully, we can have more of them. Oh. Andrew Smith, Clickat County.
Thank you.
Town meetings. Hopefully, we can have more of them, various locations. That would be nice. I noticed we were kind of civil this time around. I was impressed. Everybody came out with very nice, happy faces. 911 communications. Hopefully, we can keep that going. Whatever they need, hopefully, they can get. I enjoy when I'm up in the hills there. I can call somebody and I can get an answer. I do enjoy that. And good luck on the jail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no one else online, we'll go ahead and move to Commissioners. And not seeing anyone who would like to start this morning. Mr. Anderson? Do you have a comment this morning, Mr. Anderson?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
All right. Roger, thank you for the kind comment on the town hall. I agree. The vast majority of people were very civil and polite. Mr. Wagner, with James Dean Quarry, I would say you should look back in history. That quarry was quarried, quarried out, and the county had pretty much shut it down, because we'd used all of our rock. And the rock that is coming out of it is from the private ownership that was behind it. Kaylee, the wolf discussion. I wish we could move the boundary for where the wolves are. That is a very heavy lift between the state and feds. We have a voice. We are not at the table in those discussions. And I don't think that WASAC is going to want to pick that up, because we have people on the, the West Side who have a very different view than those of us on the East Side with regards to wolves. So WASAC only picks up projects in which it can get unanimous support for, for the most part. Gabrielle, thank you for bringing up the SBDC and our hiring of a new SBDC coordinator. And we did hire one. Our previous coordinator, the very first thing we tasked them with was childcare, because that was their background. We had them do a study, and that study came forward and gave us the information in which the Commission at the time said, we don't see how anybody could provide childcare in the private or public market, because it's such a loss leader. And we can get the dollars to build buildings. It's much more difficult to get the money in order to put into it every year for upwards of $500,000. And Commissioner Christopher, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was pretty close to $500,000 in operational losses that we would see for a childcare center. So that was where the issue always it was. Sherry, ah, what can I say here? Just because you don't like something, and just because you don't understand something, doesn't mean that we should start talking about bribery, money in our pockets, or anything else. That's not the way government works. That's not the way it operates. This isn't the 19, the early 1900s, where these kind of things happen with backroom deals and, and cash in bags. That's just not how it happens. What we do is we manage a process, and we shepherd that process along, so that people who have private property rights can exercise those private property rights. You talk about the people hating it. Well, it's not the people. The people who own the property are willing to enter into agreements with companies and corporations. That does not make it bribery or illegal. That makes it business, as the US is designed upon. Tracy, since you asked me about dispatch, yes. Clickat County does all the dispatch for our fire departments, except for Dalsport, as far as I understand. That comes out of Oregon, but everything else, we provide the dispatch for. Thank you for bringing up our consent agenda, item number four, which is the reimbursement contract between Clickat County Emergency Management and the Washington State Military Department. That is because these maps need updated in our CAD system, and they need updated on a regular basis. Otherwise, what they're looking at isn't what's actually on the ground. The great news is, this is an example of a grant that is coming forward to pay for that, so we don't have to charge the residents of Clickat County, and your taxes are not paying for it, at least the very, the vast majority of it. And with regards to your fake addresses, I will mention again that when you go on the county mapping software, and you put in an address that's not a physical address, the system will estimate that address based on the length of the road, and it will put a point, so you're getting close to what you're looking for. That's just a mapping software to be used for planning purposes only. That is not how the rest of the system works. With regards to looking into the address that a junior taxing district uses, I would have that conversation with them. That is not something that is underneath the Board of County Commissioners. And Mr. Smith, thank you very much for your kind words. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Christopher?
I will try not to repeat Mr. Anderson, so where he agrees, I will go. I, I will say, I will agree with Mr. Anderson's statement, but I will make a couple caveats to where I disagree, or want to put more out there. Sherry, looking at my notes on my blue card, the notes I wrote when you were speaking say most profound public statement you have made. So I obviously must disagree with Commissioner Anderson. Just know I, I heard you, and, and I think you were, were pretty darn accurate. Mr. Smith, more town halls. Yes, I, as you are well aware, I've been trying to do them monthly. I hope the board can limit the number of excuses going forward, and find out they're not hostile, and mass shooters aren't going to come in and shoot them up, and they don't have to fear the posse, and, and they can actually meet with the people they represent. And I'm still going to be a yes vote on that, and we'll see what the next board does. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So I think my, getting to go last is always advantageous. My seatmates cover a lot of technical things, and, and I appreciate their comments. And Roger, thank you for your participation in the town hall. I liked your question. I think it opened the door for some interesting, interesting things at the last of the meeting, to ask what we thought about some things, and that, that was nice to have from you. I appreciate your work. Mr. Wagner, I have your notes on the franchise agreement. Uh, Mr. Wagner, um, I have your notes on the franchise agreement and I'll follow up with some of those questions um that you had, uh, so I have not forgot you. I do have your notes, but I need to look into a couple of things for you. Um, Kaylee, I think Mr. um Anderson answered your questions fairly well. I would like to address the short term rental issue uh for you and for Sherry. Short term rentals are regulated. They are regulated and defined at the state level. And when you open a business, uh, you get your permit through the state, you pay for a yearly business license to have it. And because of that, it activates your revenue and so you are paying your business and operating and your monthly revenue into the state on that business. Um, so that takes care of the yearly permit you're talking about and the BNO and the revenue taxes that those businesses have to pay to the state to be open. Um, they also require some insurance and so when people apply for like VRBO or one of the short term rentals that are online, they ask for those items, so they qualify those businesses as they accept them as their partner. They want to see your business license. They want to know what your level of insurance is or whatever their requirement is that you meet their level. So there is some some second checks there. As far as the conditional use permit having to be applied for in our county, we don't have a short term rental ordinance on the books. So if somebody opens, they're under the state and they're working, there's nothing in our county that makes somebody get a CP uh CUP. There's nothing in our county uh that directs them to go there. We would have to finish that short term rental ordinance first. Um, so continuing to keep saying people are illegal because they're not doing it, they're not illegal. Uh, if we sent out code compliance, we don't have an ordinance for them to quote to uh bring them up to speed to what the county would require from them. So there's no reason for code compliance to even go out or no way for them to do that. So hopefully that helps a little bit. We do need to look at STRs and we need to move our way through that and we will get there. A lot of other work on our plate right now. And Gabby, yes, I agree. Uh, short term rent or short term rentals, uh, economic development connected with childcare makes sense. That'll probably be conversations I have in the future because as new larger businesses come in, I've seen in other places where they want to do community service, they want to give one time development fees. And there's no reason we couldn't have those hard conversations coming in even for the big companies because they're going to need uh childcare too. So hopefully they'll help dedicate some resources to childcare, so economic development could tie in that way. And Mr. Smith, thank you as always. Uh, town halls were always a very valuable part of our county in the past. We used to have them all the time. Uh, for us, it's a little bit more logistics because now with meetings, we have Zoom. We have everything we have to record, so taking staff with us and making sure we meet in a place where we can ramp those things up and have staff with us for the evening to take care of those things is probably one of the logistics we would have to look at. Where we go and what what can they offer for technology, uh, but I'm sure we can work it out. And we may just do it the good old fashioned way and take handwritten notes if we have to. That's always possible. But thank you, everybody. That was public comment for the day. So um Commissioner Reports, miscellaneous. Do you have a report, Mr. Anderson? You're online. I'll let you go first.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to mention that uh for the afternoon, I doubt I'll be back from uh this meeting with the legislators. Uh, we're having a working lunch meeting. And so I just want to let you know that I have no issues with boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty four dash zero two.
Thank you. Mr. Christopher. Nothing this week. My weeks are a blur. It just goes so fast and there's so much going on. I don't really have anything um to share with the public today about work from last week. Nothing pressing the public needs to know. Sure, uh, Scott, could we move you forward? Go ahead. Okay. We've kind of moved you around this morning, so I'm glad you have the space and the time. Thank you.
Good morning, uh, Commissioner Anderson. I'm sorry, I forgot to uh email this to you, so I couldn't. I will, I'll send you an email when I get back to the office. Uh, there is a typo on the top, sixteen Clicktack County. That's my secret code for our printer and so it asks me to print and I sometimes hit it and it says sixteen and I end up printing that out instead of putting in the code, so that's why that's there.
That is below there, no?
Is there two? Uh, no, that is, his name is actually Evan Evangelopoulos. So that's uh, that's his name. Uh, he's starting Wednesday. That's the first news. Yeah, we're excited tomorrow. We're very excited about that. Also excited, he has a, he's has a rental in White Salmon. And so we'll have a planning presence over there in the Pioneer Building, which we're very excited to have on that side of the county. I think it'll be, you know, he's going to be long range, so um, his conduct of the poke will mostly be through public meetings, but I think eventually we'll work him into other things and be available to be a staff over there to talk to to citizens, so I'm excited about that.
Jeff Hunter's been helping us out. There's a conference room that apparently is not used very often.
That's gone back and forth. It's upper floor between um, it's gone between offices and conference room back and forth and is used occasionally by public health. Um, so they're going to convert that into two offices. Um, and in the meantime, he'll use that conference room as for his space.
No, I didn't, but I assumed. I think it was where WSU was at one time. And so it's, if they can share it with public or with public health, that's great.
Yeah, we appreciate the folks over there being willing to yeah, give us a space.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we're looking forward to that. Board of Adjustment, November fourth, the Wildland Fire Resource Center, they have a conditional use permit um that's in Dalsport. They uh did, they would like to have fire crews staying overnight at camp campsites, things like that, may possibly dormitories, I'm not really sure. But they're going for a condition so that they can do overnight stays for their for their firefighting crews.
I'm looking at just tents outside or are we talking actual bunk beds?
I think it's tents outside. If Lori Anderson, I can talk slow is listening, she's the one processing this.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And I and I think a new shower room potentially, yeah.
Lori's been managing that one and I've not. Let's see here, Lori.
I I'm here. They're converting the annex building or their plan is to convert the annex building into what I would call kind of a dormitory where there'd be separate rooms with approximately, I think it's eight to ten beds or cots or whatever where the firefighters would be able to stay. They do have a primary just restroom facility and then their other part of the plan is to bring in one of those pre-made buildings, which would basically be a locker room where you'd have restrooms and the shower facilities.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome. And certainly if you have more questions, just ask.
Great.
All right, Planning Commission's busy. Uh, they're going to be doing a critical area ordinance overview of the agency comments they've received uh before starting a sixty day formal comment period. Uh, November eighteen, glad to see this one moving forward. James Dean, as long as the SEPA um determination is not appealed, will be going to the Planning Commission um for the expansion of the Aggregate Resource Overlay Zone. And that's one that's been in our office for quite some time, so I'm glad, that's why I'm glad to see it moving forward. Uh, December sixteenth is the target for the Critical Areas Area Ordinance First Public Hearing. The Monroe Wilson Zone Change, the findings are, we worked for you today, so we'll have the ordinance and map for you next week. Another one we're very glad to keep be moving forward on. Um, Northwest Lake cabins, another ones, here's a lot of the things that were on the back of the sheet uh when I started and so very glad to be checking these off. They're moving forward with recording lots, um, and then we'll be, we'll be, the next stage is work on lot line adjustments uh with the um cabin lots, original cabin lots to make sure the infrastructure associated with each cabin and parking fences, things like that are on the lot with the cabin itself. So that's been a positive, a positive work with the PA's office and with the owner group.
Can you um also check to make sure what happens with the wells that are associated with those cabins?
Yeah, uh, David with Public Works has been heavily involved and um is, he's, he's the one who's coordinating all the infrastructure aspects, making sure.
That was a weird one too.
Yeah.
If you're on a leased lot and you spent your money and drilled a well, then it became the property of Pacific Core.
Hmm.
So you used your well, but.
Yeah.
Those wells is what they're trying to boundary line adjust, the well and the septic system onto the lots or at least one of the lots, so it's not part of the common property.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I've got other current projects listed here, but I don't need to necessarily go into them. I do want to make a comment on uh short term rentals since it's come up and since I've been here, uh, Mochi's comments have been repeated. And um, when I don't speak, it's kind of stays as what the planning department's position is. Um, I didn't, but since, and I've tried, I don't want to get ahead of the Board of Commissioners, so I've kind of stayed silent on, although I did some research. But since it came up at the uh meeting, the open house and again today, I just wanted to say that anybody who's interested um could should look at the Wilkinson versus Chihuahua Communities Association. That's Wilkinson versus Chihuahua Communities Association case, two thousand and fourteen. Um, in Oregon, before I left, there was a case, I don't remember the citation, but it was from uh Multnomah County, I believe, where it was determined that short term rentals are commercial uses. So if a code doesn't address it, then there should be considered a commercial use. Uh, this case in Washington, and I've not run it by the PA, so it's not, it's just my opinion, that's all it is. But from my research, this is the standing case for short term rentals and it determines that if they're not addressed in a code, they're considered residential use. So our code does not address them. And so Commissioner Zoller, as you said, without a um an ordinance in place, I don't know that we can, I don't know that we'd have any basis to uh enforce on those at this point. But I do think that an ordinance would be good, not just for revenue, because I think that revenue would probably go toward a part, part time of a position, because we've talked about positions sharing different roles to cover, to monitor those because they've come with obviously standards in place uh that would have to be monitored to make sure the neighborhoods are protected, the neighbors are protected from the potential adverse impacts as well as safety concerns. Yes, sir.
Can you, and I'm, I'm going to look for, because I can't get a legal opinion, so I'm hoping that I get a second vote from the only person that can vote on short term rentals to get a legal opinion on that. I would like a legal opinion from the prosecutor on whether they are deemed residential if we don't have anything in our code.
Okay.
That might make a change in my mind, just so you know. Um, but I I need to know whether that's
That should be.
A a correct legal statement that he's willing to stand on or not. And if that's the case, then they, if I'm thinking, just so people know, that if that is the legal case definition in Washington, that if we don't have anything in the code, they're they're residents, then technically all previous ones should abide by county code all or should should be grandfathered. All new ones would abide by county code for residents, not for commercial, which is the way I've been thinking. So.
Yeah, I'd be very happy to. I just haven't wanted to take their time until we're ready to actually get into the code, but um.
I don't know that there could be much of a code is my point. Depending on the answer to that, so.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Maybe. Yeah, just clarification of how we treat that when we get those questions based off what the law says they are right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then we can decide where to go.
My question is if the law deems them, and the Washington state law deems them residential right now, uh, I would have no bearing to deem them commercial.
Right.
Uh, if Washington state law deems them commercial, I need to treat them like any other commercial business out there. And that's the understanding I've been under, so this is a complete one eighty.
And I think they are deemed commercial by the state because they've spent the money and bought a a commercial license to be what the state, if they've done that.
Okay.
Uh, and but the state holds that regulation, so we can't enforce that. That's the state's problem.
Don't disagree.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll submit it through their normal processes and.
Okay, thank you.
See when they have time to give an opinion.
Yeah, okay. I won't go there.
Anything else?
No, you have more time.
I don't know that anything else I need to say. The uh, the custom eight by eleven paper is uh thanks to Lori Anderson, who made fun of me for referring to it by eight by eleven, so eight and a half by eleven, so all of your documents will now be eight by eleven. So her narrows the margin a little bit. I'd say it's paper, but it was just cut off, so same amount of paper.
Yeah, so we will, you were introduce us to Evan next week, probably.
Yeah, we'll have him.
Yeah. Good.
What is the, what is the game plan? Is he working? I mean, full time planner, five days a week, or is this part time?
Nope.
He'd be working Goldendale five days a week, or is he split schedule?
He'll be in White Salmon as his base of operations and come over for presentations to the board or for meetings or times he needs to come over here.
And has he been here long? Has he got a chance to run around a little bit and see things?
He will arrive tomorrow.
Oh, wow.
He's been spending the weekend with friends in the Portland area and will be coming tomorrow for the first time.
Okay.
He's been to Hood River before. As far as I know, he's not been to Clicktack County.
Okay. Well, this would be great.
And he he found a a rental over there?
He did. Apparently just a couple of blocks away from the Pioneer Building.
That's good. Good time of year to look for on all the vacation summertime people leave, so good for him. Good. I bet you're excited.
Yeah, looking forward to it. All right, have a good day.
Thank you, Scott. Have a great day.
We have about fifteen minutes.
Might be my OCD, but I'm looking at all the tax behind Commissioner Anderson, wondering why they're not looking at nicely and neatly and straight and.
Are they in a map of some kind?
The the taxes are affecting my OCD stuff.
It's not my office, so I don't think anything are out.
I thought maybe there were pins in a map or something.
They were just, they were just nice enough to give me an office that I think is for people when they come in from out of state um for all the different meetings.
Yep. Do we want to haul it out at Public Works to let them know we're ahead of schedule or?
Sure. See if he's.
Do you want to spend fifteen minutes figuring out what Jeff's in the room for or what do you want to do?
What are you up to, Jeff? No, you were helpful.
Uh, since Jeff is in the room, I can't see him, but if he wouldn't mind coming forward and um clarifying if I was incorrect in anything on my response to public comment with regards to dispatch, just so we have it on the record.
Yes, I will. Um, no, all your statements were accurate, yes, um. Clicktack County nine one one dispatch dispatches for all public safety agencies in the county except for Fire District Six, which is in Dalsport, they're dispatched by Wasco County because of their proximity and their mutual aid agreements with Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue. Is there anything else you wanted to make sure?
Uh, can you just mention of the uh consent agenda item number four? What is the county's portion of that cost?
Um, at the most, it will be uh plus or minus eight thousand dollars match. Um, however, we've renegotiated the original um estimate for those services provided by Motorola and it will be less than that. So the totality of the grant that we received um would have covered short of the match, the original amount we were quoted, but that quote has since come down. And um, we are also going to be having a meeting with IT and Public Works on next Monday to discuss collaborations with GIS and where we might go with that, so that could further change things. And if we don't use all the grant, then we give it back. But that grant money is available uh with a twenty percent match.
It require, okay, it requires a twenties percent. So if we negotiate it down, we still have to come up with twenty percent, but there's a possibility that we could use that uh map overlay and add it to our other side of the GIS for planning purposes.
Uh, that's correct. We're going to investigate those possibilities in collaboration between the departments and the offices use of GIS services.
I would just like to say thank you to you and your staff for number one, negotiating the cost down to make it more reasonable, thus saving the county taxpayers money as well as for trying to work with the other departments to ensure that uh we can use the same map for multiple uses if we can. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and also, if there's nothing else, what I might mention is the prescribed burning that's been going on last Thursday. Um, we had a conversation about that, been Friday, they did their first prescribed burn east of the Clicktack River. east of the Clickitat River and in burn ban zone two. That did generate some 911 calls, however, not too many because of our public outreach and education. They're going to be doing another prescribed burn. Actually, today they're doing one between Glenwood and Trout Lake, just off the convoy reserve. On tomorrow, they're going to be doing one on Econe Ranch, private property east of Goldendale. So if people see that smoke, don't be concerned, that is a prescribed burn, one of the first that we've had east of 97 in many years that anybody can remember. But if you need more information, you can go to the emergency management's website. We have the press release on there from the Mount Adams Resource Stewards and the Columbia Gorge Prescribed Burn Training and Exercise Group that is newly formed in the last couple of years. So hopefully everybody's got that information and knows what that's about. And we can continue to do that public outreach so that people understand the positive ramifications of doing prescribed burn, not only for wildfire mitigation, but also for habitat and all the other things.
The question I have, and the question that's popping around Facebook anyways, how are they allowed to do a prescribed burn during a burn ban? Especially if it's on private property kids? That's a new one to me, because I know the DNR is regulated by their own, yeah, blah, blah, blah. Or some people are regulated by DNR, but how does the private property get to do that?
So they're using a DNR permit for those prescribed burns. And the county code for outdoor burn ban is, allows for that. State and federal agencies, fire agencies specifically, can manage their own activities. And those that apply for those permits, even private landowners, we're, we don't have a fire marshal, so we can't be in the business of, you know, permitting prescribed burning and so on. But our burn ban allows for that to be done by state and federal agencies, as well as local fire districts if they so choose.
Makes sense, thank you, sir.
Yep. Okay, anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for sitting in, too.
You're welcome.
It helps.
You missed one here, buddy.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Public Works. Not too early.
No, we heard in passing. And I also heard the younger brother.
Younger brother?
Torn out.
Well, I did probably do a good enough job explaining our estimate. Don't always do that, but here's the breakdown to the estimate. And it's rightfully, I would call it two, if you just thought it was a fence.
Oh, the gate.
That's how we come up with that. Because it isn't just the gate, that wasn't clear, so. There's a lot more to it than just the gate.
Go ahead.
Okay, we'll start with the younger brother. He got a little bit, a little bit ahead of himself, because I didn't get a chance to actually talk to the board about the potential of using the room. I told him, yes, I would discuss that with the board, that, you know, my recommendation would be not do that, but the board has the decision to use that conference room as a meeting room.
That's. That stood my question, because we've never had that conversation.
Exactly.
I had no idea we were adding an employee to the Pioneer Center. I figured somebody else had already.
No, no.
Signed off.
Yeah, so yes, that was miscommunication. So I guess now I'm looking for.
During.
Yes.
During those employment talks, we did talk about the possibilities with him that that would work well for them and that the employee would prefer to be on the west side for living. And it was wonderful, he found a place so quickly, I can't say he'd find it up here. And that was kind of just an assumption on my part that he was going into there. But yeah, there'll be, you know, if we're going to remodel anything, there'll be costs associated or.
It probably, like I told him, I don't know that it'll be huge cost, because I'm going to see if we have any of the extra, because it's not like I have.
I can always put a gate in there for a divider.
Yeah.
A million-dollar gate.
No, no, but I'm looking to see if we have any, you know, old, see what we got for panels or something. And that'll work temporarily, or at least for a while, because it's not like I have.
Plexiglass.
And you already have phone and computer connection up there, don't you?
Yeah, I gotta check, again, I have to check with Randy. First though, and I apologize, I told him, I said, I don't think there'll be an issue with the board, because we didn't do it, but the board has the final decision, because we are giving up a conference room.
The other thing that I would look into is whether any of the grant that's paying for the employee would actually pay for office.
That's a good point, good point.
So check that out.
Because I've talked with health, and that's why we would make it, you know, so other people have the potential to use, it'd be a two-office thing, so we're not, because occasionally health or other departments use that. WCU had it forever, thank goodness, you know, you guys, after using it twice in four years, we'd say that wasn't enough use. But, but yes, if you're, if you're okay with that, if the board's okay with that, giving up that conference room, we can turn it into office space. And it'll be one office space for that, then still an open office space that could be used as a quasi-small conference room or somebody else's office that wants to work up there.
And I know when they built that building, that was the design so we could do services on that end.
Yes.
So it's awesome that we're migrating to get some of the planning and.
Yes.
I don't know that we would ever have any of the public go in there to drop off plans and, because I, I don't know that this employee is going to be that person, but, so I didn't want to go about it with the thought that it was going to be providing planning services to the west side. But as far as office, we have office, if it's more convenient for the employee, I, whatever, I don't have a problem with it.
And I did forewarn Scott years ago, it's been quite a few years ago, there used to have somebody man the front counter over there. And there used to be more services over there.
There was, that's what the building was for.
Yes, but government, surprisingly, that side of it shrunk because they no longer have somebody, or they haven't had for years. So and I, I did warn Scott of that, because we have somebody that works out of there. And if they want somebody, if they, they have a meeting scheduled with somebody, there's, there's nobody that notifies them that there's somebody downstairs. They have to tell them, call, you know, here's my number, call me and I'll come down and meet you. Or they can walk in and walk around the building, the building is open, but the offices are all closed, you know, because there is seniors and there's health up there, and the sheriff. But, okay, if I'm, if I've heard okay, then.
I'm, I'm fine with letting them move in and use that office. I don't think we need to do much in terms of renovation at this time. Let's let it, this play out for the next few months. And, and if it is, you know, six months down the line, maybe we do some renovations. But right now, I think you could easily put two people in there, so long as you don't have an issue with help using it at the same time and somebody who doesn't have the HIPAA requirements listening in. So as long as that's the case, I'm fine moving forward.
I, I guess we're in a conundrum, because I heard make it two offices, make it two offices, don't make it two offices. So I want to make sure this man is given crystal clear direction on whether he's supposed to be looking at making it two offices or not. I'm a yes on making it two offices.
I am, if you have funds available.
Okay, we will, I will check with Scott, though, to see if there's a possibility for granting.
Or at least some part of it.
Or at least a portion of it, because it's not, I don't have any extra money.
I think history shows us, we use it.
Yes.
So, and we need it.
Okay. Okay, with that, we don't have anything on the consent agenda. Our contracts are starting to wind down for the year, so we don't have any pay estimates this time. Not that we won't still, we will, but, but that will go to construction.
All right, yeah, Sunday old eight, we're starting to wind down. Hopefully we can finish that up here shortly. Contractors placing the rock surfishing, surfacing, finishing up slopes and working on driveways. The annual striping project, the second phase was completed, making that project complete for the year. Road design, Sunnyside Road overlay, final internal review is continuing. Hopefully we can get that one out shortly. Bridge repair bundles, consultants working on 60% plans. Bickleton overlay, Buck Springs vicinity, the final advertisement set of plans and specs is being finalized with advertisement later this month. White plastic edge lines, curve warning signs, and road safety plan update projects are all pretty much the same places they were last week, just working towards getting those through design and approved, washed out.
Okay, on the maintenance side, east end, we're working on Bickleton Highway. On the west end, we're finishing up FEMA brush clearing. We're hoping to get it done this week, I don't think we're going to quite make it. And we're repairing a sinkhole in Lyle, a leaking water line that's in the right of way, so we're working through that. On the facility side, courthouse remodel, a lot of work going on this week. We're finishing up due to court being closed, so both the contractors are in there. Events, winter riding ad comes out Wednesday, so we're almost to winter riding, which starts November 1st. Where is the calendar, Wendy?
It's going to go fast.
I know. Pioneer Center, we're having window washing this Friday. We've notified the departments, and yes, we will have somebody escorting them around when they're doing the inside, they're doing the inside and the outside. They are the worst windows, we were able to squeeze that out. I don't have, there are other ones we'll look at next year. Fuel, fuel islands in the same place, same with jail, same with kitchen. Dallasport Community Center, we have ordered their sign, so they should be happy.
What is this KVH kitchen usage?
They're using our kitchen at the fairgrounds, yes.
KVH is using the kitchen out there.
Yeah, they have been for quite a while. They actually are paying us rent.
You doing a kitchen remodel at KVH?
Yes. Yeah, so they've been cooking their meals out here at the fairgrounds.
Interesting, I thought they had just done a renovation in the last couple of years of the kitchen.
Yeah, I don't know, I know they're renovating it, so they've been out there for quite a while.
That's right after fair.
Yeah, since the week after fair, so if you go out, I always get, forget about it, too. I drive out there and there's all, there's these vehicles, what the heck are these people doing out here? That's, oh yeah, they're, they're using the kitchen. They like it, it's working out well, so that's good. It's a, it's actually a commercial kitchen, which is a plus, because there's very few of those in this, or in Goldendale.
Is it a metal sign for Dallasport?
Yes, it is. They picked it out.
Okay.
We told them what the budget was, though. You don't get a gold-plated one or any of that, you have to stay within what we have. And so they went back and forth and they decided, and so it's on order and it'll be put up. And then we will be working on their back porch starting in November.
It needs it.
It does need it, it's not good, it's, well, it doesn't meet code, the railings are falling.
Yeah.
It's not good, we waited too long, but it is what it is. Also, we're doing Christmas tree decorating, they want it done a little earlier this year. They've also asked us to decorate, we only, we used to never decorate any of the Christmas tree. And then we saw them one day out there, you know, in the back of a pickup with a ladder and some other stuff. We're like, okay, you know, this is.
Got sucked in.
So we got sucked in, and so we started doing the Christmas tree. Now, as usual, these things expand, so now they want us to decorate the trees along
Oh.
the walk, too. And they're like, we walked through and like, okay, we'll figure it out. If, if it needs to, Seth and I'll go out and decorate the trees.
Yeah.
Okay, I know who will help. I knew it, okay, I got my volunteers, we're good to go.
So.
I got Casey and Tater.
You, you know that's going to stick, don't you?
I, yes, it is.
When you throw some things, they stick, that one's going to stick.
I got two new volunteers, so, and I figured we, you know, there, they said they're getting a little older and they're having a tougher time doing it, so we'll do the ones along the sidewalk, too. Now that I got two volunteers.
Just lights, or you decorate?
No, 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 those just get lights.
Okay.
The tree actually gets ordered.
I know, and I like it when it's out there.
Yes, so they want it done the first, and we have to communicate, because they, typically, they don't want us to light it, though.
Oh.
Because they want, you know, they do that Santa parade and they have the Christmas tree, or the Christmas tree lighting, or whatever they call it.
Oh, good, yeah.
But we've done that for a while, so.
So put the first on your calendar.
Well.
You gotta plug it in to test the lights, anyway.
Well, oh no, we test the lights, we won't be doing that, the guys, we have a lift, our guys do that, we ran a lift. That's another thing we've done, we've picked up over the years, so, okay, I think that's all we have. Any questions?
I don't have any online questions, I do have an off-topic, off-topic question for you, but I will wait until we're done with your update, and then I'll pull you both out of the room and ask you the, it, it's not related to county commissioner.
Oh, okay.
I want to address it from here.
Okay.
And so hopefully you guys can just chat for three minutes or something while I ask them a question, and then we'll move on to jail update.
Okay.
Anything else for you, Mr. Anderson?
If Jeff could give me a call later this afternoon around 4 o'clock, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, will do. Anything else?
Oh.
Okay, we'll take care of it. Thanks, Commissioner Christopher now. It's all yours, Tater. Well, there's a Tater pot, too.
Is that Casey?
There's going to be a login. There's no login.
Casey and Tater sounds like a disco band from the 70s. Well, I come to expect that from Jeff, because it's going to cost you a lot of money. Would you like us to wait for Commissioner Christopher to return?
Probably, we can just chat.
And I've got about seven minutes.
You got roped into Christmas, that's good.
We'll start in eight.
Yes, right. Jake, we're going to have a closed session, I'll loop back with you before Thursday sometime, or Thursday morning, to discuss what I'm going to discuss in closed session.
What times are you doing a closed session?
At the end of our update, but.
You want to do it at the beginning and I can sit in there?
You'd have to clean the room and turn it and get everybody off Zoom, and then they'd have to all come back on, so it's up to you. Or I can just loop back with you about the topic.
Yeah, give me, let's see, 4:30 today, give me a call?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Okay, come on.
After that discussion, Jeff might be mashed taters. Thank you.
He'll probably be proud.
I don't know it, but you can share it with me later. Oh, that's right, that's right.
So we'll have to talk about our Christmas dinner stuff downstairs, too, start planning. Girls were talking to me about it the other day.
Speaking of Christmas, I will tell you that Casey may or may not have threatened to run an extension cord from the tree across the street up the wall and in the second-floor window to light the tree earlier.
I will help you.
I wasn't threatening it.
I wasn't.
It's such a slum time of year, it's so nice to look out the windows and see that.
Different options.
Different options.
Thank you, everyone.
So starting with the jail update, um. Not much to um update John at this point. We were able to uh make a purchase for a little under five thousand dollars in um liability reducing equipment for the jail. The pool is in the process of cutting the check as we speak. Um, since that point, I've learned at least one other item that jail could use. Um, starting in October, we get another five thousand dollars, so we will create a list. And then when the new jail administrator starts, um then they'll have access to um to that fund. Uh, if the commissioners wish to continue to purchase liability reducing equipment for, for the jail. So we, we made that, that cutoff and so uh that cost will be covered. I had a fairly lengthy meeting with the undersheriff and the sheriff yesterday about the jail, the productive meeting. I appreciated their time. Um, I think we um were able to discuss a lot of items and, and um. I'd call it a positive meeting and I appreciate, I appreciated their time. Um, so, and then finally, I know there's a lot of consternation amongst corrections officers about the lack of information. We're just at a point where the background process is underway. I've talked to the investigator. And we can't, nor should we speed it up. It has to be a thorough process. The applicant is cleared uh his schedule to make sure that he's available when he needs to be available. And so it's on track and on course and that's basically all I know. So it's not a matter of withholding information. That's right now, there isn't a lot of new information to go on. Um, so until we get that closer to where we get a start date, then we can reengage some of the other conversations. So I'm not allowed um under labor law to engage directly with the corrections officers because we're in bargaining. And so I rely on the sheriff and the undersheriff to do that and the union. And so um, but I understand their frustration.
And this sheriff and the undersheriff and the union have all the information, so they can still go to them because they're employed under.
But again, there's not a lot of new information to share, so it's kind of, uh, there's kind of a void.
Right.
Uh, for them. And uh what I've advised yesterday was whatever the sheriff um and his command staff would normally be doing at this time of year in conjunction with the jail, collective bargaining. In terms of seniority vacations, that kind of stuff, they should continue to do that. Um, it shouldn't be, nothing should change at this point, no lapses, so, so we had a good discussion about that.
So that's. Can I ask you a clarification question? It's more of the board. In, in, I guess I would say I'm just trying to get recollection in case I'm wrong. I believe the plan was when we get the person. Director or commander or whatever we end up calling them. The plan was to get them on and hired and then wait at least a period of a time, whether that's two weeks or whatever to do the transfer. Is it, they just taking the, I'm getting a no, so I must be wrong. Is the plan just to transfer the minute they start?
We have had that discussion. I brought that up last week, that there's been no discussion with the commissioners in this setting. Or no recommendation for me about that, so there has been no discussion. Um, my assumption would be on one end, you can't take control of the jail without somebody to run it, so that's one end. The other end is I'm not sure it makes sense to bring somebody on board and not have something for them to do, meaning running the jail. So I, I think it's safe to say the start date and the transition of the jail should be fairly close together. Uh, that would ultimately probably be the recommendation, but without knowing what that date is, I, I can't speculate, but Commissioner.
That, that makes things a lot clearer for me on where I was thinking it was versus where it probably will end up, so.
I mean, to hire somebody, have them go a month without the jail, that doesn't make any sense. There will be a transition. I'm fully confident that uh the sheriff's office will assist the new uh jail administrator in that transition. And, and um, once we get to that point, things will, will work.
How do we uh manage this with our budget as well at the same time, ensuring that all that transition on the back end is done?
Well, they've created a department number uh for the Department of Corrections. So the twenty twenty-five budget will be under the Department of Corrections. The twenty twenty-four budget, the final resolution like Benton County discusses. And I've had that reviewed by the finance team. Um, so at the point of the transition uh where it covers transfer of property, vehicles, budget, authority, contracts, forms, collective bargaining. All of that happens in the final resolution, and that would be the point where the budget would officially uh be moved from the, under the sheriff to the Department of Corrections for twenty twenty-four. In the meantime, I know the auditor's working closely with them on the processing of invoices and it. That.
Okay, uh, thank you for the update. Uh, I hope that you've got a little bit more, but I have to go.
Thanks.
Keep up the good work, you guys.
So we don't have a lengthy update today. Um, IT, I submitted them yesterday, IT's update from Randy and uh. And I know George is, is busy. I, I admitted code compliance. I think he now is, since the report came out now up to fifty-eight or fifty-nine.
Can we back up to the jail real quick?
Yes, sir.
Because I, I guess I have some concerns. So I, I guess I worry that our plan is to hire this person. Uh, take control of the jail, put them in place. Yet I don't know that we have any plans for how we're transporting without using posse anymore. And so I worry that we just. We're gonna be in such a rush that we're gonna cause problems.
Yeah, it. Which is why we haven't, I haven't made a recommendation yet. Once, once I know where the background check is and this person is given notice and all of that stuff, then you know, it may be they start and there's a week. They, they start a week before the transition, so they can meet with uh the undersheriff and the sheriff and, and get that information. I point blank asked the sheriff yesterday if the posse was doing transports. He told me they were not doing transports to the court system. I think they do to Walla Walla occasionally in other places, but he said they were not transporting.
They're not actively transporting.
To the, to the courts, to the west end. And uh, and he um. And I'm, I don't mean this to come across negative or, because he, he didn't say it this way. But any involvement of the posse with the jail will cease with the transfer, so. But at this point, it appears it's minimal, other than maybe transporting to.
Okay, okay, I feel better then.
But, but I do think there needs to, you know, when we, when you have an open discussion about the transition. We'll need to take that in consideration about.
As I said, I, I, I'm still gonna hope that we give the guy a week to walk around and get his bearings and come to us and tell us what needs to be done before.
That's a valid point. So.
Make a rest decision and, and then go whoops.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you. That's all I have to drop.
Okay, thank you. So um anyway, George is uh game two or three fifty-eight, open active cases a lot. This is usually the slow time of year, uh but if, depending on the winter, then potentially septic complaints will start back up again. So um, his time's better spent not here, but trying to deal with these cases. But I know that this update covered some of the, the more high profile ones he's dealing with. So if you have questions, I can uh either have George give you a call or, or he might be in the building. He could come down if you, if you wanted to. IT is also busy and that Randy did a good uh.
The only thing I would, I would like to see in this next report is we haven't had it. Um, and I don't know that I'd call it an end of year report. But we have the new voucher system with Republican uh in the cans. And I would kind of be curious on how many of those vouchers and how many of those cans he's used in the last calendar year. I mean, I guess it's only been in place for, but anyway, it'd be nice to know.
We get that. I don't think it's been a large number because most of his caseload has been septic systems and that kind of stuff. And not necessarily litter or um property cleanups, but we'll get that number. We'll get that number.
It would just be nice to know once a year, so.
Yeah, absolutely. It'd be nice to be, have him give a year and he had fifty-eight cases now. He's had many closed, so at the end of the year to see the total number of cases.
Right, as I said, a once a year review and how many, what percentage of his cases are septic tanks? What percentage are this? What percentage are? And just kind of do a year in review whenever that, you know, it does not be December.
No financial update today. I think Jen's on Zoom, but this is a busy time of year for, for her position. So um, the meeting every Thursday, so she didn't have anything to add that you don't already know. HR, um Casey, did you have, we didn't really have anything to, I would like to. Um, continue to remind the commissioners and everybody listening that we have updated the commission many times, at least once a year for the last six years about these overtime changes. And uh we can't control when the state rolls out this information and when it's implemented, we still don't know. Um, and so to notify people that may be impacted in three years when it is changed from the Obama administration to the Trump administration. You know, now this administration and the numbers go up and down and up and down, so we've done our best. Um, these are round numbers, so don't quote me specifics. Um, seventy percent, seventy-seven percent of our employees are non-exempt or hourly. So by far, the majority of our employees are hourly. We know how to do hourly. Every director, every office has hourly folks. So um before we spend a lot of time on trying to figure out how to circumvent the law or the intent of the law to move a subset of the twenty-three percent of folks that are salaried slash exempt. I'm not sure we should rush into trying to figure out how to, how to solve that until we know what the impact is. Uh, and we can talk more about it once we know if there's gonna be an impact. And, and to the extent, it could be anywhere from seven of the current um exempt folks to twenty-four. So anywhere from fourteen to forty percent, we just don't know. Um, but. People are getting creative on their solutions and, and I appreciate that. And I understand the angst on both the employee side and the, the management side, but um. I'm not sure we should rush into a solution and, and um, I mean, the bottom line is it's probably. Get me calls later in the day. Everybody knows how to manage overtime. Overtime is pre-approved. It can be managed. And so uh, once we know what the impact is, maybe we should do that for a while to see what the true impact is before we make uh. Creative ways to, to work around it, so, but clearly open for discussion. And as we know more, will, when we find out, we will bring it right back to the commissioners. Anything to add to that?
Um, I did get pricing for first aid training.
Oh, that's right.
So they used to have separate pricing for renewals and new um first aid classes. It's fifty-five dollars per person now. Um, and there were times that they would offer the training at Rural Seven. And so we would just get the schedule out to employees and then they were able to go. The renewal classes were usually in the evenings and then the new classes were usually on Saturdays. Um, but we recently have also provided training here um onsite. And so they have come and provided that for us. And so they are working on getting it scheduled for Goldendale and White Salmon to provide onsite training for first aid for us for our employees.
So would like some clarification and it might just be me. But I've heard everybody should get the training, which fifty-five times two hundred and sixty-three. Or then last week, I thi- I thought our Commissioner Christopher say at least one per office and department.
I, I, my, my statement is still, I think it should be mandatory that at least one person has the training in each department. With that, I also think it should be provided to anybody in the office in each department that wants it. Not everybody's gonna want it. It ain't gonna be every employee. Um, I'd say less than a third would probably want it, but if they want it, I don't think we should deny it.
We, yeah, and we have always said in our emails sending out um for employees that want to sign up for it to check with their department heads first because the department is paying for it, obviously, and so um that has always been mentioned in the emails to get preapproval to attend the training. Um, because then Rural Seven will invoice the county and the departments for them to pay for it, so the employee doesn't have to.
So if the commission wants to direct, at least the directors to have one per department, that probably should be in the form um of a vote or of, of, of a motion. Um, and then is it okay? Fifty-five dollars isn't a lot, but uh we are heading towards the end of the year and there's only one transfer left and nobody's gonna transfer fifty-five dollars. Can this roll into next year? If, if a department says, can we do it in January or February? When, when the, with the, under the new twenty twenty-five budget, I'm just trying to think ahead. Would that be appropriate?
I would like it done as soon as possible because it is pretty evident CPR and first aid saves lives and I don't care about fifty-five dollars. If I get to do a supplemental from reserves to pay for it, fine, whatever. Um, it's to me kicking in, 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 to be all honest with you, I would like it set up as a policy before I'm potentially not here anymore, so I can kind of see that it's going to continue on a yearly basis. Um, so yeah, for me, I, I would make a motion and.
Can you reach out and see how many departments already have somebody? I have mine, so.
I have mine too.
Yeah, so I bet a lot of people, yeah.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be hard to send out a mass email to county employees and see how many of them are interested.
And how many already have it? You know, a lot of the departments might be covered already.
Think we'll do two wrong, start with the directors and elected, because they may know and then follow up with everybody.
We might diminish our twenty twenty-four half tabs that way and then make a policy starting twenty twenty-five.
And uh this training has always been provided, um, so.
That's a good thing.
And then finally, we have uh as of this morning, eleven applications for the coroner position, so.
Yeah, something.
I'll probably wait through the end of the weekend and then scan and send all of these to you. Um, the posting has only been up two weeks, a week, not even two weeks.
Last week, last.
Last week, so uh I'm trying to.
How many are local? How many are not? Ballpark, haven't looked?
I've looked, but not at that. I've looked at qualifications, so.
Good, that's awesome.
Yeah.
We're afraid.
I know there's some from out of state, a couple from out of state.
A lot of interest.
And then there's many from living in Clickatet County, so, yeah, a lot of interest. So I assume we'll get more, so I'm gonna kind of wait and not, so I'm not sending you three or four a day and, um, and then um. We'll get those to you and then we can.
Okay.
See next steps.
That's good.
So, okay, um, closed session would be our next for collective bargaining.
So we would um. Let me see, be moving into a closed session under RCW forty-two thirty-one four zero. Collective bargaining session or four, print four, print A, collective bargaining session with an employee organizations including contract negotiations, grievances, meetings and discussions relating to the interpretation or application of a labor agreement. Um, so we will have to excuse everybody from the room and on Zoom and we'll be recessing, is that correct, until uh Thursday?
Yeah, we don't have anything.
Yeah, oh, we do have afternoon, so we'll be recessing till one o'clock.
How long are we going in?
Fifteen, um, fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, okay. And we'll start at ten thirty. We have two minutes to.
All right, well, then I will uh keep us abiding by state law. And say that we will be going into this closed session at ten thirty and we'll be back at ten forty-five.
Thank you.
I can go with ten if you want.
I don't care, we always go long.
Okay, fifteen, all right.
But you can't not say when you're gonna be back.